Congratulations to the flag, the United States of America. And through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Kavanaugh.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Cunningham. Davio.
Here.
Dering.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kinville.
Here.
Pinard.
Here.
Rieger.
Here.
Ruder. Roberts. Schwartz.
Here.
Stepansky.
Here.
Stokes.
Here.
Bossberg.
Here.
Walrod.
Here.
Wicks is absent, and Winn is absent. Thirteen hundred and seventy-one votes present.
Okay, are there any corrections to the May thirteenth, uh, meeting minutes? If not, can I have a motion? Tom, second. Lauren. All right, uh, discussion, all in favor? Posed, carried. Uh, we have a, nope, gotta wait till eleven oh five, way too fast. Um, first. Can we do the public?
We can do the public comment period.
Anybody on the list to speak? Jeff, no, anyone like to speak on the, the agenda for today? I know you're dying to jump up there and do that, so. No, okay.
You can do our first resolution. Uh, we have, our first resolution for the day is a resolution of appreciation for retiree recognition. This is Pete Walrod, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Okay, second, Rex. All in favor, say aye. Posed, carried, thank you.
Shelley English, can you step forward with our Finance Director, Luanne Randall? We are recognizing Shelley for thirty years of service today.
And Matt, would you come up for Finance, too?
We worked at school together.
I'm not gonna cry, right?
I cry? She was already saying.
Under twenty minutes, okay?
No, it'll be, it's gonna be quick. Good morning, everybody. So, we are here to honor Shelley English, who plans to retire this Friday after more than thirty remarkable years for the service to Madison County. Shelley began her journey with Madison County in nineteen ninety-four as a typist. Back then, files were mostly on paper, phones had cords, and the world seemed to be just a little bit slower. Over the years, she became a dependable team member. From her early years typing away, she rose to become an office assistant to a role that she, which she truly flourished in. For the bulk of her career, Shelley served as a cornerstone of the Treasurers Department as a role she filled diligently, of course, with her signature cheerful spirit. In two thousand eighteen, she transitioned to the Finance Payroll Department, where she continued to be a bright presence, a reliable coworker, and a source of wisdom and laughter. Shelley has been more than just a coworker, she has been a heartbeat of our department, always upbeat, always smiling, always ready to share a story, often from her colorful childhood or many experiences she weathered and celebrated through her life in Madison County. Her stories reminded us that no matter how fast-paced our workdays became, there's always room for a little joy, a little reflection, and a good laugh. As Shelley steps into this new chapter, we know she'll take sunny outlook and storytelling magic wherever she goes. While we will miss her dearly, we're excited for her to enjoy her next adventure she's so deeply earned. Shelley, thank you for your decade of dedication and your generous heart, you've given so much to this county and to us. Enjoy every moment of your well-deserved retirement. Thank you. You're welcome.
Next, can we have Lori Reagan come up with our Human Resources Director, Ryan Alward? We would like to recognize Lori for eighteen years of service.
Thanks.
So, I'll be a little shorter. Um, Lori has been here for eighteen years, and almost all of them, I've been here with her. Uh, Lori got hired about three weeks after I did. And we've been together and through, uh, a number of dramatic changes here, uh, in our lives. Um, enduring financial crisis, global pandemics, heated presidential elections, naughty governors, and Julie Chesborough. In addition, uh, Lori has dealt with a number of personal tragedies in her life. Um, things that have impacted her and her family in a way that, you know, almost seems unfair. Through all of that, I can general, genuinely say, um, I can't remember a time where she ever once complained about, you know, her lot in life. Um, not when we were all complaining about the state of our worlds, our country, our state. Um, and not when she was managing personal, you know, situations at home. This is a testament to Lori, um, and her makeup of her character. Uh, I'm proud to call Lori a friend, um, and I can assure you that when she does leave our office, everyone in the HR office will be sad to see her go. Will miss her knowledge, uh, her work ethic, her skill. More than that, though, we'll miss a woman who has the best attitude and the best disposition in this entire county. Um, she's always someone looking for the light even when it is dark. So please, help me wish Lori a happy retirement. Yeah? Good for you.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but, um, yeah, eighteen years, it's been a hard decision to do this. I can honestly say that I've loved my job here, I really have. Um, for anybody that's just starting out, it really is a great place to work, and there's a great group of people. Um, I really wanted to thank my husband, my family, my coworkers, I couldn't have done it without you guys. Um, we've had a lot of fun together.
Agreed.
I'll miss you all.
Okay, um, we're gonna open up the, uh, public hearing, uh, motion to open up the public hearing for, um, letting increase in tax exemption for qualified senior citizens. A motion, Evan, second, TJ. Uh, all, all in favor, say aye. Posed, carried. Okay, anyone here to speak for or against the, uh, tax exemption for qualified senior citizens? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Um, we see Michelle and Mary. Okay, discussion, all in favor? Posed, carried. Right. Um, let me see, we wanna do this right now. We have two, um, candidates who finished their Certified Legislative Board Clerk course, and, uh, one is Emily Burns, and the other one is Christine. Huh?
Kristin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kristin. Ginto, okay, so, uh, can we come up and get a picture? Can say they are both wonderful to work with.
Thank you, I do better behind the desk, but thank you.
Great, we have a proclamation, Mary.
Thank you, uh, this is, um, proclamation proclaiming July twenty twenty-five Disabilities Awareness Month in Madison County. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, signed into law on July twenty-six, nineteen ninety, stands as a landmark civil rights measure that prohibits discrimination against individuals with disabilities and guarantees equal access to employment, government services, public accommodations, telecommunications, and transportations. And whereas over the past thirty-five years, the ADA has empowered millions of Americans with disabilities by breaking down barriers, increasing opportunities, and fostering greater inclusion in every aspect of community life. And whereas, we mark the thirty-fifth anniversary of the ADA by honoring key milestones in disability rights, including the nineteen ninety-nine Olmsted Supreme Court decision, which affirmed the right to live and receive services in the most integrated setting possible, and the two thousand ten Affordable Care Act, which advanced mental health parity and access to care for individuals with chronic pain and substance use disorders. And whereas the ADA continues to evolve in response to modern challenges, expanding its reach into digital accessibility, inclusive emergency preparedness, and equitable healthcare access, as most recently underscored during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas Madison County is proud to stand with leading advocacy and service organizations such as Access VR, The Ark of Madison Cortland, Arise, Life Plan, EPI New York, Madison County Advocates, Madison County Motivators, and the Self Advocates of New York State, Central New York, in recognizing the continued importance and impact of the ADA. And whereas, we reaffirm our county's commitment to partnership, advocacy, and action in pursuit of a more inclusive, equitable, and accessible future for all residents, regardless of ability. Do you want me to read your part?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna do things a little bit different today, we're gonna have our committees, um, do a small report as we vote on each, um, each committee resolutions, so Pete, GOC.
So, yep, first, we're gonna do the Government, uh, Operations Committee Resolutions two through six, this is Pete Walrod, Chairman. He's gonna give a little report, and then he can make a motion, and we'll go from there. But I wanna say the resolutions.
Ready?
Ready.
Yes, um, Government Operations Committee, uh, today presenting five resolutions for, um, decisions here. Two I'd like to highlight, uh, one of those being the reappointment of the Director of Real Property, um, which is Karen Richmond, that's a six-year term, Karen's been doing a really fine job. And as a testament to her dedication, her efforts, um, she actually is making the trick, trek down to Georgetown tonight to inform our citizens about, uh, residents of, uh, volunteer exceptions that they might be, um, qualified for and answer questions. Appreciate that, Karen, and Karen, that's a six-year term, and really happy to have her on board. Also, another one I'd like to highlight is the reclassification of a position in the County Clerk's Office. And again, this is, um, you know, a testament to their efforts, and I think the public realizes we, all of us that have to come up to the second floor, and we look down over there into the lobby, and we've seen the lines, realize the work that the DMV and County Clerk's Office is doing. We're reclassifying, uh, one part-time recording clerk into a full-time motor vehicle representative position in the DMV. And I think that not only necessary, but, um, I really wanted to just say how much we appreciate the hard work down in that department, and this hopefully will help them some, so that's the resolutions for today.
You mean a motion?
Yep, Pete, if you wanted to make a motion.
I make a motion to move these resolutions for adoption.
Give me a second. Kyle, discussion?
I'm gonna do a roll.
Roll call, please.
Pinard.
Aye.
Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts. Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes.
Aye.
Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones. Kinville.
Aye.
Thirteen hundred seventy-one votes in favor.
All right, Matt. Finance Ways and Means.
Good morning. Um, some highlights in, uh, of finance ways and means. Um, our sales tax continues to trend a little bit above budget. Um, and we like the trending above budget, not behind, so we're hoping to, uh, we really don't know what we have until the end of the year, but it's a good trend. Um, the other thing that's going on in the county Clerk's Office, we feel that we have the best DMV in New York State, maybe in the nation. Um, if you, if anyone comes in, has come into the, uh, DMV, sometimes the lines are out the door, and you'll see our clerk and all of the other employees helping people in the line. A lot of that is due to the real ID applications that people are coming in for. Um, and the second reason for that is some of our neighboring counties are operating by appointment only. So there's actually signs that say, go to the Madison County DMV in Momsville, and we gleefully accept all of those people, and it's allowed us to have about a twenty-seven percent increase in the, uh, the DMV traffic and the dollars that we're generating. So that's really good. Um, keep them coming. As far as the, uh, um, the, uh, resolutions, the first one, we had the public, uh, uh, comment period on, we're increasing the tax exemption for qualified senior citizens, so the income level will go up. So you're, you'll be eligible for a higher percentage. Um, that will not kick in until next year's tax year, and the financial benefits will not be, uh, realized until twenty twenty-seven, but that's just as soon as we could get it done. The balance of the fi, uh, the resolutions are almost all budget modifications, which happen every, um, every month. A lot of that is when we get grant money, we have to put it into the budget, and we don't do that till we get the grant money. And then, the last couple are, uh, have to do with the disbursement of real property taxes from the county to the towns and villages and the city of Anita. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'd like to move these resolutions for adoption.
Can I have a second, Melissa? Discussion? All in favor, or I'm sorry, roll call.
And these are resolutions seven through twenty-one in your packet, uh, roll call is Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes. Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh. Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kinville.
Aye.
Pinard.
Aye.
Thirteen hundred seventy-one votes in favor.
Health and Human Services, Mary.
Good morning, uh, we have three resolutions, and, um, just highlighting, uh, a few of those. Um, we are, one of them is to extend the tiny homes program. Um, and another one is to, uh, appoint a member to the, uh, Madison County Youth Bureau, um, a resident from Chittengong. And, um, also, I'd like to report on our, um, Housing Coalition meeting tomorrow. To address housing in the county, we're gonna be meeting at Delphi Falls, um, from nine to eleven, uh, with other members of the community to form a healthy housing coalition. And we're gonna be focusing on housing needs in our communities, um, and how we can work with the local landlords, codes departments to discuss, uh, financing, engaging other municipalities, uh, conducting training and education, uh, and advocating for transportation. Um, our previous meetings were facilitated by members from the National Center for Healthy Housing, free of charge. And, uh, we're hoping that by forming this coalition, we'll be able to gather some real data on our housing challenges in Madison County, and to make a plan, um, on how to best address these challenges moving forward. And I will, um, move these resolutions for adoption.
Okay, can I have a second? Randy? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Yeah, resolutions twenty-two through twenty-four in our packet, this is Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes.
Aye.
Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kinville.
Aye.
Pinard.
Aye.
Rieger.
Aye.
Thirteen hundred and seventy-one votes in favor.
Okay, planning, Evan?
Yeah, good morning, um, we have three resolutions this morning coming out of the Planning Committee. Um, the first one is to authorize a contract with Madison County BOSI's for the twenty twenty-five Summer Youth Employment Pro, Program. That is a program that's so essential to our community and our, our young people. Up to eighty, um, resident, young residents ages fourteen through twenty will be able to have summer jobs throughout the county, and BOSI's is managing that, um, as they did last year, I believe. Um, the next one is, is a resolution to get some additional funding from the Central New York Regional Planning Development Board to help, uh, develop a watershed, um, element program, watershed plan for Anita Lake, that's also very important. And then finally, um, a economic development loan from the Madison County Revolving Loan Fund. Um, and this is really kind of a unique one, um, we're trying a little pilot, the town of Hamilton, as it happens, got a grant from Restore New York, um, to replace, uh, six vacant houses. And, um, the funding for that will be reimbursed, um, once the houses are completed, and that has become quite a financial challenge for some of the owners, because it takes a long time, as we know, to get state or federal grant money back. Um, and so this is a sort of an innovative way of utilizing funds that are sitting in our revolving loan fund, and the, the, uh, the people, it, once this is granted, the, the, the county will be getting interest on the loan, um, and it will be repaid once the state funding comes in. So it's, it's something that I think is, is a great, it's a good example of how we might better utilize these funds. Um, anybody have questions about that? If not, um, I move these resolutions for adoption.
Can I have a second? Kyle? Discussion? Roll call, please.
And these are for resolutions twenty-five through twenty-seven in your packet today, says Roberts. Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes. Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones. Kinville.
Aye.
Pinard.
Aye.
Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder. Thirteen hundred and seventy-one votes in favor.
Okay, criminal justice, Rex.
Uh, for resolutions today, uh, the first one is a, uh, agreement between the Mass Guy Sheriff's Office and, uh, City of Utica to, uh, share resources, when something bad happens, the cops all come and work together, it's a beautiful thing, it's a five-year contract. The second one is for assessment management. Funded through, uh, uh, Division of Homeland Security, twenty-five hundred to set up, uh, there's an eighteen thousand, uh, dollar annual fee. The next resolution is, uh, uh, agreement between the county and Multi-Med Billing Services, just to update the insurance requirements, some changes that need to be done. And the last one is, uh, Division of Homeland Security, it's gonna have some, uh, equipment we can use for flood mitigation efforts in the county. Uh, we will not own the stuff, but we'll have, uh, I think they're looking on us to, uh, to house it for them, and then it'll be convenient for us if something should happen disastrous-wise, we'll have the, uh, equipment somewhere stationed in the county. Uh, so if there's any, isn't any questions? Uh, move these resolutions for adoption.
Okay, can I have a second? Michelle? Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
And this is for resolutions twenty-eight through thirty-one in your packet, uh, Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes.
Aye.
Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham. Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones. Kinville.
Aye.
Pinard.
Aye.
Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder. Roberts. Thirteen hundred seventy-one votes in favor.
Oh boy, Lauren?
All right.
Ouch.
Uh.
That's fine.
With a turn in better weather, the highway and facilities have really picked up their, uh, pace, and they have a lot of work to do. On the resolutions, we had, uh, they're selling surplus property, and, uh, we also had an agreement for, uh, generator maintenance campus-wide and under facilities. They have a rigorous schedule for repairs throughout the county. Plus, they've, uh, we've had discussions on the, uh, highway administrative building demo, demolition. And, uh, that's it, thank you.
You wanna make a motion, yeah?
Yeah, and I will move those resolutions for adoption.
Thank you, can I have a second, Tom? Okay, discussion? Roll call, please.
This is resolutions number thirty-two through thirty-five in your packet, uh, Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes. Bossberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Aye.
Wicks and Winn are both absent, Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham. Davio.
Yes.
Dering.
Aye.
Henderson.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kinville.
Aye.
Pinard.
Aye.
Rieger.
Aye.
Ruder.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Thirteen hundred and seventy-one votes in favor.
Okay, Melissa, update?
Yeah, I sure can, um, we don't have any resolutions in front of you, but we did have a very productive meeting. Uh, we did go over the, uh, twenty twenty-four final budget review and tip fee change review, um, which the mid-year tip fee increase yielded an additional six hundred thousand in revenues for the solid waste, um, department, and recycling markets did hold steady, and, um, ARC held, uh, MRF costs only to seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, we still have some challenges and need to plan for funding for equipment purchase to bring operations back on a capital or replacement cycle and to reduce maintenance costs. Uh, we also went over, let me, sorry, let me scroll up. Um, we also, uh, went over our project updates, um, that we're moving forward with our landfill netting and fencing repairs, uh, landfill gas collection and dewatering project, and sewer maintenance and leachate line cleaning project, and our compost and mulch project. And we did have a discussion of, um, the, where will garbage go, which is a follow-up of our April, our IT conference that Greg and I attended, and we were looking forward to find out where garbage goes, and unfortunately, everyone else is in the same spot that we are, and no one really knows, so it was a. So it was a really great presentation from Barton Le Judas, giving us information. Of the landfill crisis that has not only impacted here locally with us at Madison County, but that is throughout the state. And throughout the whole United States. And let's see, we had our shred event on Bouvier Road, which was a success on May thirty-first. There are some town cleanup days. Look for, keep an eye out for Brookfield's date. And Madison will be June twentieth and twenty-first. We have the New York State D E C Solid Waste and Video Shoot, which will be the twenty-third and twenty-fifth. And we will be helping support the county fair with waste and recycling. And that'll be July twenty-first to the thirtieth that we will be helping them. And we will also have a table the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. And we have a open house scheduled for August second. More information to come. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate it. Moving on to the regular agenda.
Yep, we have resolution number thirty-six in your packet today is modifying an agreement with Community Action Partnership for Madison County. This is Mary Kavanaugh, Chairwoman, Health and Human Services Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Can I have a second? Brandy? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, discussion? Roll call, please.
Stokes. Bosberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Hi.
Wicks and Winn are both absent. Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Derring.
I.
Henderson.
I.
Jones. Kenville.
I.
Bernard.
Hi.
Rieger.
Epstein.
Ruder.
Hi.
Roberts.
Hi.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Twelve hundred and nineteen votes in favor. Next, we have resolution number thirty-seven in your packet today. It's authorizing the chairman to modify an existing agreement with La Bella Associates. For Madison County's USDA Reconnect Broadband Project. This is Lauren Corbin, Chairman, Highway Buildings and Grounds Committee, co-signed by Yvonne Schwartz, Chairwoman, Planning Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Second, please, Tom? All in favor? Opposed, Derry?
Last resolution in your packet today is number thirty-eight, changing the location of a regular board meeting. This is Pete Walrod, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mister Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Have a second, Rex? Discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, yes.
All right, Bosberg.
Yes.
Walrod.
Hi.
Wicks and Winn are both absent. Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Corbin.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Davio.
Yes.
Derring.
I.
Henderson.
I.
Jones.
Hi.
Kenville.
I.
Bernard.
Hi.
Rieger.
Hi.
Ruder. Roberts.
Hi.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Stepansky.
Yes.
Stokes. Fourteen hundred and seven votes in favor.
All right, thank you supervisors. Did really, really good for the first time. Appreciate that. Sheriffhood, is there anybody on our second comment period signed up to talk? Did you say you, did you say you wanted to talk? Okay, so now we have the honor Rex Vosberg from the wonderful town of DeRider to give a presentation on his town. Thank you, Rex.
Don't go anywhere, folks. It's okay if I sit here, Chairman. Perfect.
I think you should probably.
So I'd like to, I'd like to thank my daughter who was a seventh and eighth grade English teacher in DeRider Central. She was instrumental. She did things with a computer I didn't know computers could do, quite frankly, but. And I'd like to thank Dan DeGeer. Yesterday, we went over the final version. He sent me a lot of information. A couple of times during this presentation, I'll actually have Dan come up because he lived through some of it, was part of it as a supervisor from DeRider. And the other issue, the other subject actually is something he has much more knowledge about than myself. So I thought to myself, and I don't think Matthew Urtz is here, so I'm safe. I don't, he's not going to call me out if I make some mistakes here about the history of DeRider. I wanted to come up with something that would really tell the story about DeRider. And it kind of ties into what Yvonne said earlier. And as I go on, Madison County is a bunch of small towns that make up, had to make up a county. And so as I go through this presentation, I say, you know, that's, that happens in Stockbridge and Lebanon. And you know, it, it happens in all these small towns. Fenner, not to leave anybody else, Georgetown. A young lady in about two thousand and three, I'm not sure my dates, it was early two thousand. Word got out, she was probably twelve at the time, thirteen at the most, was battling cancer. So what do you do as a community? You come together. So. The athletic director decided to come up with a, a soccer tournament. So all those little towns came. And one guy bought a, I'll try to get through this, it's kind of emotional for me, but. A gentleman bought a loaf of bread for a hundred dollars. Geez, I didn't think this was going to happen. Anyway. She survived. Went on to Almera College. Boy, I had no idea. Anyway. She's an on college nurse on the floor upstate. So that's what a small town does. I'll get through this. I'll get better. Anyway. It's funny, her parents got married at Delphi Falls. And I was there when they removed their vows before the facility was done at Delphi Falls. And now we're having a birthday party down there. I'm sure Candy's phone is ringing off the hook, so. All right, so starting in, DeRider, New York, a community that shows up. Where did that come from? A representative made that statement to our librarian Amanda Lad from the Rural Health up here in Madison County. So that's, that's where that came from. Uh, let's see if I know how to change this thing here. Look at that. This, this is just a white-hotter part. This came out of a book, actually, Dan's going to speak about. In nineteen eighty-two, they put a book together and we became a flagship community. But yeah, if you're born on June thirteenth, your family receives gifts from local merchants. It's the first baby of the year. In this Sunday church, you're going to get well, get well card because somebody's going to, going to either call you out or say, it must be something wrong with him. He's not here today, so. You're driving a ditch five miles out of town. By the time you get back to everybody else, already knows about it. You have, you, you, you end up socking for fifteen minutes anyway. I've done that myself a few times. You go to the store to buy two items, you come out an hour later. My wife's always going to the store. She's gone for two hours, you know, she goes down there and meets people and talks to them. So that's, that's the, that's the reflection of a, of a small community. And we're just far enough out there in that corner. That we have enough services, we can really just survive down there without traveling too far, which is a great thing. It's a great thing for people that have. We have a senior center down there. You'll see some, some of the people pushing their walkers up to go to the store. There, there's enough services that you can survive right there. Good winter storm or something, you can survive right into rider, so. All right, we'll start with the history. You got to catch up here. Really sad, losing Chris Lys and Elijah Benjamin, Joseph Messenger, Samuel Thompson, William Russell, and Zanish Rider. Seventeen ninety-five, the town of Casanova was formed from Whitestown, it was known as the Lincoln Purchase, probably ties to the Lincoln House. This included what later became Dryder and several other towns. Seventeen ninety-eight, the town of Dryder was formed from Casanova. Casanova gave birth to, to the number one and first and best child, the rider. The rural town was five miles wide, thirty miles long, included present-day Georgetown, Lincoln, Otseleek, and Pitcher. Initially named Trump, Trop, I mean, Trump Township, I call it Trump Township. By Holland Land Agent John Lincoln and honor of the Dutch Admiral Martin Van Trop. The name was later changed to DeRider to honor another Dutch Admiral, Michael DeRider. Eighteen oh six, Madison County formed, separated from Shenango County. Eighteen fifty, other towns were set off and the present bounties of DeRider were established. Eighteen thirty-three, the village of Dryder was incorporated. The town hall, we're going to talk a lot about that today, but the town hall, rural town hall was an engine house, was built in the village. And it will now used by the parking lot down by Shelly's in the four corners of DeRider. The upper floors include a ballroom stage. Eighteen eighty-four, they had a fire. And that bell fell down through, I guess, Dan may speak about that. Someone actually heard it fall. And nineteen forty-six, New Hall was destroyed by fire. And now that bell, if you look to the left there, you can see it in this picture, is mounted in a brick stand with a historical marker. In nineteen fifty-three, the former school was purchased to serve as a new town hall, which is this building right here. The town paid two-thirds of the purchase cost. The village paid one-third. Two thousand and seven, following decades of deterioration, and we're going to talk a bit about this today. In the lack of renovation funds, the late George Staley and his family donated the majority of the renovation costs for the town hall librarian. And his wife and his, and his, and, and mother with children, Genevieve. I quite often tell people, the top floor is the library. If you haven't been there, make a trip to the rider. It's a, it's a library with a town hall that happens to be in it. I give full credit to, to the library up there. We support the financing stuff, but it, it's a, it's a library that happens to have the town hall. And quite frankly, with the advent of Madison County EMS moving to our firehouse. The village is going to be moving their offices up there. So we'll have the village kind of on one side and, and the town business on the other. No, that's, we're going to start with George Staley. Graduated from Dryder Central School, attended engineering school, focused on air and power plants, worked for Martin Aircraft. Went to South America, run Africa to work on plane carburetors. Assigned to work on B twenty-nines by Boeing, sent to Tenyon. I, I'm not pronouncing that right, probably under Colonel Tibbetts. He took the only colored photo of Colonel Tibbetts receiving the distinguished service cross after a mission to drop the atomic bomb on, on Japan. Afterward, worked on Franklin cars or air, no phones in those cars. Eventually held the largest privately-held collection of Franklin cars in the world. That don't sound good. I just want to read a, a quick, quick article about George. He went to the state New York Aviation Training School. Eighteen months later, he had a federal licensed aircraft mechanic. He was employed by Martin Corporation Baltimore. I had a repetitionist job, so he, he left that and went to work for. Let me get this. Yeah, he worked for Martin Corporation, went to work for Bendix Aviation. At Bendix, George specialized in fuel systems, figuring out ways to boost the reliability and performance of fuel pumps and carburetors. That was especially. The assignment took him, took him all over the world. He recalled Bendix sent him to the Boeing plant in Seattle, Washington, where he put his talents to use in the B twenty-nine. Super Fortress Heavy Bomber Project. When the United States Army Forces dispatched Colonel Paul W. Tibbetts Junior and Anno Gay. To the island of Tinanen to prepare for the dropping of first atomic bomb on Hiroshima, George went along to tend to the planes. Four massive eighteen-cylinder Wright radial engines. The photo of George snapped, like I said previously, is in the Smithsonian Institute. So, small boy that went from Milken Cows down to Lincoln. Heard an advertisement on the radio for this carburetor school in Utica, which back then, Utica was a long ways from Lincoln or DeRider. And he told his dad that's what he wanted to do. And that's what, that started the, on the course of George's life was going to this school up in Utica, New York. So I'm just going to have Dan talk a little bit about the remodeling and George Staley's part in bringing that building together for the town hall.
All right, I'll be brief on this, but if those who remember when we renovated DeRider to Town Hall. If, if anyone visited it prior to that, it was a shallow what the building is today. The building was basically one floor, a portion of the basement was usable, but the entire top floor was. In quite, you know, inhabited by pigeons and, and years and years of pigeon droppings, right, what pigeons do. It was, it was a pretty extensive project. DeRider for years knew they had to do something with the town hall. They weren't, just weren't sure what to do. Until Mister Staley came forward and, and said, look, my, you know, I went to school there, my wife went to school there, my wife loves the library. We want to do something for the library. And let's renovate this building. He and his sons, he's got a son Claude who runs a. Carpentry business downstate. And he spent many, 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 many days and hours and weeks and months in our community, helping with this project. But they donated, we don't even know how much money. We, we, as a community guest, made over two million dollars that they donated as a family to put that building back together.
Uh, Dan will give out that number. I think it's a trade secret, I think. I don't, don't be quiet.
I don't know if we ever, we were able to truly identify how much money, because not all the money went through the official books of the project. He, sometimes things would just show up. Mister Staley is quoted in an article during the time that basically said, you know, I can't take the money with me and let's do something for our community. So, so that's what he did. And I was, I had the pleasure of knowing him. I had the pleasure of working with him through that project. And, and bringing that town hall to fruition. And I think it's one of the more beautiful town halls now in central New York, if not the whole state. We, we are really fortunate to write it to have it.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, brand new supervisor. Hey, we got to build a new town hall. Good luck. So notable, some of those, this, Lehman Cage, I hadn't heard of till I did this endeavor. James Nye, first governor of Nevada Territory. Israel Cornell was actually assigned down at Four Corners in DeRider, explain that. I think every student, Israel, every, every student in DeRider School has to do a report on this man. Obviously, one of the founders of Cornell University, so. Sig Self-held Circus, this was fascinating. I'd never heard of it, but I think it was in Syracuse, New York. If memory serves me, and they, they boarded him out, they sold the building or something. So he went out during a snowstorm or during a snowstorm, decided to move. He went on a scouting trip. Found a hotel in DeRider, bought it, brought his circus and all that entails. To DeRider to train for the fairs. At one time, he was on the canal. He'd go up and down the canal route and, and entertain people along the canal route. Then I guess he went to trains and then he went to roads or vice versa. So part of DeRider's history that. He actually ended up in Homer, New York after he left DeRider. And the story has it that he did not, did not like dogs. And there was somebody in town in DeRider didn't like him very well. They had a big dog. So every time he went out for a walk, that guy took his dog out, kind of tried to drive him out of DeRider. Apparently it was successful. He ended up in Homer, New York. And I'm going to have Dan talk a little again about the flagship town.
So DeRider, DeRider holds the distinction of being a flagship town. Now, this is a. It's more of an honorable designation in, back in nineteen eighty-two, the NATO fleet. Admiral DeRider, so it's a Navy ship or a NATO fleet ship. Dutch ship was named after DeRider. They came to DeRider nineteen eighty-two, had a nice big celebration. Designated the town as a flagship town. It's the only municipality in the world that we are aware of, named after Admiral DeRider. So they did that. That's celebrated two hundred years of Dutch-American diplomatic resolution, or I'm sorry, relations. And to this day, the Dutch flag is outside this daily civic center in DeRider. It's, it's displayed. What's why, if you ever go to Dryder, go, why is the Dutch flag hanging in front of their town hall? It's because DeRider is a flagship town.
This actual photograph does hang in our courthouse down there in DeRider. Quaker settlers initially, part of the Duane'sburg Monthly Meeting, played a significant role in DeRider's early history. Quakers established a meeting house in eighteen oh nine in the settlement, also known as Quaker Basin. If you go to Four Corners and turn left. That's called Quaker Basin out through there as you drive. The DeRider Mainland became filled with a Farmington Quarterly Meeting, then the Cipio Quarterly. Watershed is kind of interesting. Northern portion of DeRider ends up in the Saint Lawrence Watershed. And southern portion actually goes to the Chesapeake Bay Watershed. It's amazing that water can travel that far, but. Dryder Lake, called Dryder Lake Home for thirty-six years. I used to drive through Dryder and I think to myself, boy, this reminds me of where I grew up. I'm not living here ever. But as fate would have it, the best things I did was the girl I married and where I decided to settle. Soon was headed down the Co-op one day on business, my, my, not my wife yet. Saw a house for sale by owner, stopped, actually looked through the place. Said to me that night, I think we found a home. And so. So it was a good move on her part. No plans, it just kind of happened. But anyway. Resilience constructed in response to canal authorities' needs. It actually was to fill the, the canal. Water in the summertime when, when run low, so. Twelve hundred and eighty feet above sea level, higher than Lake Jordan, where it's highest, Serenac Lake, and it's fed by the Tafne Oka River. Two miles long, about half mile wide, there's depth seventy-five feet. It's probably more like fifty-three. But the dam, which they recently just redid, redid, is approximately one quarter mile length. And that's actually in the town of Casanova. Uh, Dan, which they recently just redid, redid, uh, it's approximately one quarter mile length and, and that's actually in the town of Casanova. And uh, town of Fabius is up in the, in the north, uh, uh, west corner. Five hundred fifty-seven acres and a hundred thousand dollars back then, of course, as in the Civil War, that was. Probably like ten million back then, who knows? These are just some beautiful photos, my daughter put out on Facebook. To send some photographs and people responded, cuz that's what they do in small towns, and so some of these photos we just. From what we collected, people, she explained what I was trying to do here today and uh, they just sent some photos, so. It's a beautiful little lake. Life in Dryder, uh, aerial views of downtown, you can see the hills. Uh. There's a hill I go on most, probably four times a week, a friend of mine owns it. They call it Hang, Hang Glider Hill. Uh, they used to, more so than now, Hang Gliders used to go off the sill, I take the dogs up there, it's a beautiful view of the community. I can drive you up there, you don't have to walk it, if you ever come down, you wanna take a little tour, come on down and see me. The town library, like I said, it's at the top floor. Uh. Important part of the community, uh, just fits in so well. Uh, we have a tremendous librarian, she does a fantastic job and it's, it gets very well supported by the community. There is an actual room up there, if you happen to get up there, that is, was left. In the original state, uh, to kind of give the, the library a corner up there that goes back in history, so. Make sure you check out that room if you happen to go there. Uh, the American Legion. Uh, that was just a great picture of the sunset, uh, somebody sent in, so I posted it, uh, yeah, we're, we're big on veterans. Uh, down there in Dryder, obviously like a lot of small communities and uh. The Dryman Farming Fair, it's a big thing, we have a parade, uh, started in nineteen twenty-seven. Uh, fireworks are fantastic, if you've never been, come on down for the parade. And spend an evening or a day, can bring the kids, grandkids. Uh, they give the wristband, so certain days you can ride all day if you buy, pay for one price. Uh, very part of the fire department, uh, they uh. Uh, hold on just a minute, they uh, uh, it takes volunteers, uh. Brookfield's gonna find us out, they are probably, you know, you. It's, it's, it's the number of people that put in an effort, uh, we only get thirty calls a year as a fire department, you guys have something. The fair is really the focus, uh, uh, they, they work hard at putting this on, so. Alright, Kristen, go ahead and play this, you might recognize a voice in this.
Who announces?
Yeah, who does it? Everybody thinks I have a tough job by announcing the tractor pull, I just get up there and howl and scream, that's all I do, it's, it's perfect for me. It works out well, so uh, yes, the tractor pull.
Hey.
Wanna do two of them? That's it, that's good, Kristen, yeah, yeah. They get the idea.
Oh, yeah. Right, Dave?
That's embarrassing.
That's cause he, when he hit the next building for the slap.
Can't go forward now, Kristen.
Go ahead.
Oh, finish it, alright, well.
He blows up.
Alright, so I had to. Even those two things, you'll see the, uh. That's actually, the, the families pay for them banners and. There's really just a smaller group that puts them up and takes them down every year and uh. So we honor our veterans down there, the same uh, group that uh, puts these banners up, don't, uh, they decorate my town hall. Uh, they decorate the bank and I don't, we don't pay for anything, it's all volunteer work. And of course I had to get a, it's made a big impact on the, on the community down there, but I had to get a picture of uh, the EMS, uh, the ambulance down in Dryder, so. The school, uh, if you ever get a chance, go to the Dryder, uh, website, they. Had a video made, it's, it's, it's probably a little too long to play today, it's like six minutes, but. Really explains the community and, and the school, and like I said, my daughter teaches down there, yes, it's the biggest employer, it's the identity of the town. Uh, three hundred and twenty-one students, uh, racial seven to one, so nobody falls through the cracks in Dryder. Uh, we know, they know who everybody is down there, so uh, it's a great little school, really is, and uh. Both my kids went there and they're doing big things, so uh, very proud of the school. This here kind of pictures, uh, I should have Dan talk a little about this, but uh, you see the track there, this is, this is from the. West looking, uh, east, it shows the school there on the left of the highway. And yeah, maybe talk just a bit about the track, Dan, if you would.
Um, for years, there, there was a track coach in Dryder, name was Stephen Camelback, uh, one of the just. Down-to-earth great guys, um, everyone loved him, we called him Coach C or C. Cuz nobody knew how to say or pronounce or, or even spell his last name, but. Um, he was a firefighter, he's a teacher, he was around forever and he, his dream was to have a track. Um, unfortunately, he passed away before we could, he could see that dream come to fruition. Um, in his memory, his family included his wife and five daughters and their families. Uh, they, they did a lot of fundraising, they pushed a lot of efforts to, to get to where they could donate a, a considerable amount of money to the school. Um, when we did a capital project to put the track and we put it in, uh, I think four years ago now. Um, and since then, we've been hosting, um, sectional meets and, and just large invitational meets, it's phenomenal to watch it come in. Um, it's just, it's just a really cool thing and I wish, I know C's looking down now. Proud of it, but uh, I really wish he'd had an opportunity to, to see it come to fruition, cuz he was, he had these kids. Training on the streets, they, they'd run the streets and obviously that's not good for them, it's not safe. Not good for their feet or their knees or their ankles, but uh, he always had a, a strong track team, even though these kids never actually practiced on a track. And uh, now it's one of our most popular sports and it's coached by one of his son-in-laws, so.
Yeah, actually Steve, uh, all the meets are away, we had no tracks, so every time. And you go down there and you'd see the hurdles and stuff set up in the parking lot, that's how they trained. But uh, so it's quite a, quite an amazing story. And just another side note, uh, I did count the signs, they're, they're out in front of Dryder. School, I had to get down there yesterday and there's thirty-one students from Dryder graduating this year, so. Of course, I can't go on without talking about our farming community, uh, these are a couple of pictures, this is actually a Northern Lights just a few weeks ago. Uh, the picture on the right, and I just thought the picture of black and white with a cat was awesome, so I put it in here. Uh, we'll talk about businesses though, the Drifting is a classic, uh, if you go to the library stop and, and uh. It's, I don't, I don't know the year of this photo, but the Drifting is, is a kind of a landmark down there. The lower left is uh, the hardware store, countryside, been a business a hundred and five years. I need some gravel for my lakefront and I called Sandy, the proprietor, and I've tried to pay her for ten years for the gravel, she goes, it's not worth nothing anyway. So uh, uh. She come down, her son come down loading my trailer for me. Shelley's, uh, a restaurant there on the top right there is uh, been a big part of community, reelection, uh, spaghetti dinners. Uh, anything, then, all these businesses have been huge. The bottom right is Dick Smith, I like to talk about Dick because he ran our ambulance service, he has that. Furniture store, the big, there's a big furniture store, all US-made products in there, if you wanna go in. Washers and dryers, speed queens, he's, he's got it all in there, stacked in there. He has a funeral home and he ran the ambulance service for ninety-eight years, Dan, ninety-nine years. Uh, all the carpet in the town hall is done by him, cuz he sells carpet and stuff in there. So Dick has been a huge part, him and his, his, his uh, mother and father have been huge, huge people in the town of Dryder. So you can see the, the theme, these, these businesses, uh. Uh, you can call a little money if you want, but these people have, have uh, laid roots in Dryder and had businesses that have been around for a hundred years. Uh, the general store there, Dryderlake.com, if you're on the south end, uh, you can get anything you want in there, uh, from, from bait, uh. Anything you want, something to drink, uh, sit there and watch the boats go by. The one to the right. Is a courtyard, uh, I guess you'd call it, uh, kind of a bar slash restaurant, bar food. Uh, I don't know if this is a fundraiser here with the horses or not. The Dryder Farm and Garden Cooperative was actually an old eggway store and when Eggway left, they said, uh, you'll never, you'll never. Just single one. Uh, the same proprietor, same, same gentleman, it's run by a board and stuff, but the. Same gentleman that managed it still there today and they've made money ever since Eggway left, so. Uh, Dryder supports that store and it's still in business, so uh. Uh, the bottom right is the uh, boathouse, uh. A young couple runs that, it's open from Wednesday through Sunday. It's right on the south end of the lake, I would recommend going down there and having dinner and. And sitting out on the deck if you can and watching the boats, it's a, it's a wonderful facility, so. Farming, what can I say, rural agricultural town, uh, there's no question about that, these are some photos that were sent to me also. I think the showing is, I don't think that's actually in Cortland County, there's, the fair there, but look at the heights of that corn. And uh, there is somebody actually still baling hay in Dryder, so instead of chopping it all, uh, I think I had a note here. I wanna look at this, it's important. That he uh. You gotta remember, New York State is still. A agricultural, uh, state, I think we're in the top ten on different, thirty different commodities, I think we're fifth in the country on, on milk production, so. Uh, Mr. Jones will tell you, that's why, uh, I have two dairy farmers on my board and they hear my stories from Fenner and they just shake their heads because. They, they remember that town when it looks like it does now and it's, it's, it's not gonna be the same after uh, this gets, gets through what they're going through, but. This is another black and white photos and beef cows. Uh, uh, so yeah, the, the dairy industry is number one industry in town and we're very proud of that fact. Winterfest, uh, a group approached me and said. We started Winterfest, we had one and then, you know, it kind of died out and COVID hit. And it's like anything else, I said, it's only, is a group of people at this table make it, so we started small last year. Picture myself, my wife to the left, uh, uh, and uh. It went very well, went so well, we didn't charge anything, we didn't charge for, they had homemade donuts, we made popcorn. Uh, the school made that, uh, placard, you could stick your face in there and have your photo taken. It was really a community effort, in fact, the superintendent, superintendent of the school came, New York Capone came to all our meetings. And uh, people, actually, there was like a jar there and they stuck money in it cuz they wanted it to happen next year. I went around and I collected twenty dollars from twenty businesses. Some getting forty, twenty dollars, that's not enough. Even uh, uh, business down by Sandy, I can't come up with her name right now, what's the door, uh, Kelly Brothers. They're a national company, I mean, they have a business in Dryder, I went in, the man at the place said, hey. They sponsor the tractor pull, they give money. He said, it's only twenty dollars, I said, yeah, you want, we're out of safe, got me twenty dollars, and so we got. Four hundred and fifteen dollars, I think, in our account down there from donations and what we collected, so uh. So it's gonna get bigger, I'll, I'll let you know about the date, if you wanna come to the Winterfest this winter and Dryder, New York. This picture came from, what happened was a, a, maybe it was down, took, took friends from out of town down to the Dryder Fair. And the guy said to Jerry, said, I feel like I'm in the middle of a. Uh, Northern Rockwell community, so I said to my. My daughter, we gotta put a rock well, cuz that, that, that's Dryder in the same, a lot of small towns, so. Thank God for the small towns and the people who live there. Thank you.
Great job, Rex, Dan. Appreciate it. That was one of our series of letting everyone know what our towns are like. Thank you all. Um, any other business to come before this board? Melissa?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Madison County Fair, um, will be July twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. And we're looking for energetic, friendly and community-minded individuals to help us make this year's twenty twenty-five Madison County Fair a huge success. Um. They definitely need volunteers for event setup, cleanup. Information booth staff, parking assistance, contests and ex, uh, exhibit coordinators, hospitality and guest services. Um. They're flexible on shifts, so if you have a few hours in the morning, afternoon or evenings. That would be perfect and um, why? Um, why would you volunteer? Well, we have, you could be a part of a cherished community event, you can meet some great people. Uh, earn community service hours and it's fun, so any information or if anyone would like any information, feel free to reach out. And I'd be happy to connect you to the right people.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you guys can go down before it opens. Clean up. Yes.
Is there, is there any other business? If not, motion to adjourn? Evan, TJ, okay, all in favor, say a. Thank you.